Mr. President, I make an amendment to the agenda and amend the order by striking the wording of item 12 and replacing with, in the matter of approval of acceptance of deed from Glenite Thomas Group LLC, approval of conveyance of deed to Glenite Thomas Group LLC for the purpose of confirming leasehold legal description to the survey description, and adding item 27 in the matter of approval of the emergency replacement of the 24-inch pressure cylinder line, and item 28 in the matter of approval for submission of FYI 2021 assistance to the firefighter grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, by Mr. Travis Beard, a motion by Mr. Aaron Bryan, all in favor. That will be the unanimous, thank you very much. We'll go through the proclamations, recollections, and reports of the agenda, and begin on the proclamation, Mayor.
Yes, we have one for Arbor Day, and I'd like to read that. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. Captain, keep you both looking beautiful, it's your honor. Whereas in 1872, Dave Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas, the Arbor Day called Arbor Day was first observed with a planting of forty million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce erosion, and our precious topsoil on wind and water can heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resources giving us a cooler environment, countless wood products, and habitat for urban wildlife. And whereas, trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, people have been recognized as a Tree City USA thirty-five times by the National Arbor Foundation, and desire to continue its planting practice. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Jordan, Mayor of the City of Tupelo, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim December 7th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Tupelo, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to plant in the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My next kind of recognitions are Maryland Boy Scouts, and I don't see one here today that fits that description or this. We'll go to employee recognitions, and we have any other questions, we have any tomorrow. We'll go through public recognitions, and I'll begin with Mr. Danny.
One of the things I would like to mention, and I feel too, we also very important person in our community, Aldi Conne, who was on the radio station in Tupelo, and he might play it later, and I went to his funeral, but I would like us to be in prayer for his family. He had some sons in our family that are still real families in the music industry, and I just like us to be in prayer for him, and try to feel a boost in our love.
Thank you, Mr. Danny Travis.
Yes, I have a couple of recognitions. One, we had the lighting of the park, Battle Park, this week, I'll give a shout out to Alex and their good job that they did with the park. This year they had special Christmas trees provided by different businesses and churches in the community, which was, we'd like to see that grow in the future and hope they will. Also, Ms. Lisa Faulkner, and the Tupelo Museum had a sign available for the children, and had a good turnout for that. And just to mention that we have a new reporter active tonight for the Tupelo Daily Journal, Mr. Caleb McCluskey, and welcome him to our council meeting.
Why ask him to stand so everybody can recognize him? My children know who he is.
This probably the only applause.
I wanted to say thanks to Mr. Matt Turner, recognizing him. Also, I want to say hey to Mr. Ray McLeish, that's a missing.
What's on that? Ms. Danny.
Well, I would like to congratulate Taylor on his promotion, and thank him for all he's done for the City of Tupelo, and wish him well.
I take what she says, well, Taylor, he does a great job, and I'm excited for your future. I also want to have opportunity today to tour through the Tupelo Hotel, and Jessica Hollinger, which is the sales manager, gave us a quick tour of it. Really exciting opportunity for Tupelo to see something like that, it just takes us kind of to the next step, I believe. So there's a lot of good things to come, I'll leave the grand opening's February 1st for that, so it was exciting to see that.
Thank you, Chad. I'd just like to say, this has been my ninth year to be a part of, I know we didn't have a Christmas parade last year. This Christmas parade, I think, got the all of them, and it's something we all should support and keep it forever and ever, because what I saw, and I think all of us saw this, that so many families with little kids out there, and it's absolutely amazing, and so all of it, that through this, I want to give you a round of applause, it was absolutely amazing, thank you. Just that I'm why everybody's here for, the mayor's remarks.
I almost made it through everybody before sticking my thumb. We did a great job, volunteers, if you were down there and saw people running around trying to get everybody in the right spot. Somebody said ten thousand at the parade? I don't know, but that would be a pretty good estimate, but obviously, the sponsor of my reads, and their continued support and leadership, you know, you have a lot of purpose, and that was a great one, but, you know, the Christmas spirit is definitely in the air, the council chambers look great, I've been around town, I think there's more lights than there has been in some towns, so, you know, it's a special time of year, and we have an important meeting tonight, and I will thank the council for what they do and how they vote, and, you know, we just always look forward.
Very much, Mayor. We'll start with the meeting, and open the public agenda, beginning with public hearings. Number one, in the matter of public hearings for rezoning. We don't have anyone to speak to that. Number two, in the matter of public hearings for demolitions. We don't have anyone to speak to that. We're in all of field, we'll go to citizens hearing, which we validated, Dylan, I know Mr. Matt Turner, are you here, Mr. Turner? Come forward, please. Your name is Adam West, and you'll have five minutes, see if you can. Okay. I'm like your two, you have five minutes. Go over to the speaker.
Good evening, everybody. Here. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here, and I recognize some people, too. One of the hardest working ladies in Tupelo for about twenty years, is Nada Davis. I'm in your ward, I'm in your ward, two ward seven, that I talked to.
Yeah.
Huh?
You're a mom.
I did, it's seven.
And my poor, and let me, this is concerned, we had a problem Tupelo, concerned home, with Mrs. Martha Garrett, she's doing a great job, you see her tonight?
Absolutely.
And, Ms. Garrett, tell my homeless friend, when we tell you, you're doing a great job. Basically, you worked both night and day, you're doing a great job, you know, and the ones that you've got housing for, you give them a new job, and they're doing good, and you're doing a great job, like mine. I wish I had your use, you know, certain more. And, okay, right now, Tupelo, all American citizens, is that for the, is that for the homeless, for the homeless people? Quick one, sorry. You have, my homeless friends, they're back in the hill in the homeless shelter, because they're sitting on the bridge, and Ms. Garrett is down there, why, helping people, you don't get enough credit, you know, my homeless friends, tell the city this tonight, and we need to do something quick, because by the Saturday morning, if they can take them up in the gym, we can get out and they can sleep in there, they're getting sick, I said. I know this is home of Ellis President, just also the home of homeless people, and we need to do something quick, fast, and urgent, because some are sick right now. Some people, people once a year, on Thanksgiving, but some of them are home every day. That scripture, like the Psalm 133, "Behold, high good and high blessed we have, from brother and brother together in unity." Also, in Matthew 25th, thirty, 25th chapter, 35th through 41st, talks about when I was homeless, didn't have a shelter, in prison. See, anybody that tells a child they're in prison for a small crime, for a small crime, they're not allowed to sleep at the Saturday morning. They're not murdered, all right? We need to talk about that quick, fast, and urgent, and make this a real all-American city. I bet it's in 56, I meant ever since 56, over a shake rag, I'm about nine years old, I'm doing that second. Two minutes, make it quick, okay? Sometimes, sometimes there are some good people, it hard for me to stop, but I will stop in two minutes, and I'm betting you said you could do more, and help Mr. Garrett more, this man's working both days and night, trying to make things better for the homeless. Let's put them up for Christmas, or let's put them all up. We have women sitting on the bridge, we said some of they on the bridge, and turns out that Mr. Mark had just left, you know, no, they take a lot of that man, and that I mentioned was Mark Garrett, because he had hung the homeless bridge. They, they played about this, Garrett, and you're doing a great job, you know, and what can I say, about time, about, one minute, okay? Okay, I want to thank y'all for allowing me to come here tonight, and the name of our organization is United Brothers and Sisters of Mississippi City. My son, he's vice president, his name is Macofford Turner Jr., he, at one time, he was on the planning committee here, but he wasn't, the planning director still in Greenfield, you know, and, and he's doing a great job there, and he's always talking about Tupelo, and they're great here by Tupelo. And, I'm proud of Tupelo, I've been here. And, and let's come to you, let's do it for the homeless, my time is up, I'm not good at this.
You're very, very good, again, to all of the community, I appreciate it. I think so, I take my hat rolling now. Well, now goes into action, agenda, beginning with item four, in the matter of amendments for chapter four of the Development Code.
How would that be approved, the amendment, to chapter four?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Danny Davis, the second by Mr. Travis Beard, panel.
Yes, the October 21st Planning Committee, the Planning Committee recommended the chapter four, the changes to chapter four of the Development Code, change or to increase the maximum lot size and location of residence on visitors to live, and two, the second change to reduce the opening space requirements by ten percent from the current standard of fifteen percent. And the reason for this request is we discovered a few months ago that there is no type of zoning we can see currently that allows a lot of two acres, so we asked the council to approve the planning committee's regulation.
Do you have any questions for the panel? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. You announce, thank you, panel. We'll now go to the routine agenda, beginning with item five, in the matter of approval of amendments on November 16th, 2021, salute.
Second.
We have a motion, by Mr. Aaron Bryan, second by Mr. Chad, all in favor. Let you announce. Item number six, in the matter of bill payment. You ready to pay the bill? Second. We have a motion by Travis Beard, the second by Mr. Bryan. Tonight, the bills will pay by Mr. Beard, Miss Gavin, Miss Davis, Lenny Comber, Uncle Watson alive, Tracy Denver, and Mr. Johnny Townes, all in favor. Thank you. In the matter of advertising and promotional items. Salute.
Second.
A motion by Aaron Bryan, I have a second, by Jen S. We have $350 looking on the courier Tupelo bank statement there. Is that everyone, that's all we want, okay, all in favor? Let you announce, thank you. Item number eight, in the matter of budget amendment, number two, for fiscal year 2022. The move.
Welcome.
I have a motion by Travis Beard, the second by Mr. Danny Davis, Miss Kim Han, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Before we deny, you have the second proposed budget amendment. This actually includes a rollover of excess revenue over expenditures for fiscal year 2021. It is our policy to transfer this to the capital fund, and it helps offset any bonds that would be needed, or any items that we have in my public interest with. This year, we're asking to transfer of the $7,051,264 in excess revenue over expenditures, mainly due to expenses that were not expended, and things that we were unable to do during 2021, we're asking to rollover $4,048,000 of this. We're also asked, we formally asked at the last council meeting to use $3,000,000 and $3,000 to pay off lease instead of general fund debt, we asked to pay off toward the Espo project dated back from 2015, so we would cut ten year off of that debt. And in addition to that, transferring that to the capital plan, it will be unallocated to be allocated, which will be at a later council meeting. But in addition to that, we would also like to ask for a 3.1% rate for all full-time employees. And this would be done through the recognition of intergovernmental revenues in excess of what we originally expected to receive, offset that, we're not using the excess revenue for salaries that will go to the capital fund, and to pay the debt that will not be used for salary, we will need a recurrent source for that, which will be in our governmental revenues. And you'll see additional funds, the San Antonio Fund, the Thorpe Fair Fund, as well as the tourism fund, and the Paulson Fund that will be increasing, I'm sorry, not Paulson, but the other funds that will be increasing for salary increases.
Sounds very good. Any questions, council?
I just like to say that I'm happy to see us given consideration to raise pieces including representation for to the council, which will be next, next four years. I think the council works very hard, I've been, I've been working hard for several years, and for some reason educators can't be included in this salary rate, so, but I'd like to see others being together, so, thanks for making that reference, Jason, I hope you'll give some more to do.
Any more comments, questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. You announce.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to be dancing. Get the play right.
We have a motion to adjourn, okay, all in favor. That is good, thank you. You announce. Item number nine, in the matter of pausing various bank accounts, most down.
Yes, this is just a housekeeping issue, we're trying to reduce the number of bank accounts that we have, especially the pass-through accounts that don't hold money for very long, we can internally take care of that, and I just ask that we close these.
I probably made a mistake, I probably, did I, I did a motion, a second, did I have a second? We didn't get a second.
That's good. I hope that we would approve the bank code of the various banks in town.
Second, okay. All in favor. All in favor. All right, item number ten, I heard one on, in the matter of performance of John Swat, that's a police chief. We have a motion, by Aaron Bryan, we have a second, the panel.
Mayor. Yes, we had twenty-eight applications from around the country for this position, which I thought was phenomenal. We had excellent interviews from our initial agents, and I appreciate everyone's commitment dedication to coming in, but one name kept coming back, and from the recommendations from other areas, from me reaching out to other agencies in northern Mississippi, other people, and the recommendations that were coming in from other places, and when you're a law enforcement for twenty-six years, and you never had one negative comment, you're doing something right, and I believe that the City of Tupelo is going to home run with this one, with that, I really think they had y'all for me.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments?
Hey, I was going.
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Danny Davis.
I wanted to say that, in my opinion, this one was an important position in the community because this is what you deal on about, police chief doing and all these things, but my service on the council for twenty years, in the past, we have not gone through this process that we, that we are using, and I, I like to really commend him, because in the past, I think we may have actually recommended somebody, and we voted on it, but this time, a committee was established, and it consists of three, I think, three African-Americans and three whites, and they did a lot of hard work in evaluating the applicants, and I'd like to say that I was just very, I met with Mr. Quell, I just had to learn that, pronounce that name, without the last three letters in there, AKA, but I was just very impressed with him and his personality, and I'm glad to be inquisitive and ask him a lot of questions, and I'm just really impressed with him, so this was one of the main concerns at the intersection of the police chief, and so we have, in my opinion, and I feel like I can judge people pretty good, excellent candidate, excellent person, that I hope that we can approve tonight, and move forward, and make sure that our community is moving in the right direction as far as crime and all these problems that we are facing in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Danny. Anyone else?
Mr. Quell, he's here today, he asked me saying, so if I could see who I am, welcome. I just had the pleasure of meeting him yesterday, I asked just a few questions, but we all know war is coming, and I would like to congratulate you on your position, I look forward to getting to know you, I look forward to working with you, and let's keep the law across the board equally, and let's make the great city even greater. Welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I also wanted to, I met one at a personal level through our church, and he and his wife didn't want to recognize her as well, they're great people, I had great references that reached out to me, and want to commend Todd for a great selection, Tupelo very fortunate to have someone like him, with the type of experience he has, the type of character that he has, that we're extremely fortunate, like you said in our sit-down, he's doing this not because he has to, but because he wants to, and so that's great to hear, so congratulations on that.
Maybe I'll leave the vote first.
I think it'd be appropriate if your wife was there, so we could feature her kind of.
This is my wife, Nikki, for twenty-six years, she, we were married, one day after I graduated the FBI academy, and she's been with me since day one.
Very good. We have a motion, a second, all in favor. Let you announce. Would you like to say something?
Sure, I would like to. I want to thank you for everything, the process is professional, as professional can be, which I think is going to be a benefit for the Congress, I just want to say thank you, and I look forward to this, I really do, I didn't ever think I was going to leave you, to be honest with you, but when I started thinking about this a year ago, I just could not stop thinking, my wife didn't test for that. I'm looking forward to the challenge, I'm looking forward to the relationships that are going to be built, and I'm going to tell you, as I told my wife, I am so excited and terrified of exactly what you can understand responding to. I look forward to it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Item number eleven, in the matter of approval of home insurance security grant for the Tupelo place academy list. Move and accept. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, the second by Mr. Chad, all in favor. Let you announce.
Tonight, I'm just seeking in council approval to accept this land security grant, we would be receiving $10,000, $72,000 to spend, to spend for computers and a side-by-side of the U.S. Better Academy, and that's, oh, there's the Mac, just so you're aware.
Any comments? I personally think that's a good deal. All in favor? Let you announce, thank you, I appreciate it. Item number twelve, in the matter of approval of acceptance of deed from Brook Hill, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's just a question. I make a motion. Let me read this again. In the matter of approval of acceptance of, of sections of deed from Gen Light House, that's a, an approval of conveyance of deed to Gen Light Thomas Group LLC for the purpose of conforming leasehold legal description to survey and description. Salute, second. We have a motion, by Aaron Bryan, second by Mr. Chad, and that will be Mr. Ben Oles.
President, Paul, we have about a $700,000 square foot building on one roof, or part of it is owned by the City of Tupelo, about 520,000 square feet, part of it is owned by Gen Light, Gen Light is selling their property to Brook Hill Enterprises, and the city is retaining the city-owned portion, which is to get the, at all the time, they just got all together, I think it started in 1947, that ad building here, ad building there, they're going to have a flip survey, in the process of this transaction, we completed overall survey of the, of ownerships, and we need to switch those equipment needs and that, so that they can close some of this transaction in front of it.
Any questions for Ben? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That is you announce, thank you. Item thirteen, in the matter of ratification of consent to assign leases from Gen Light Thomas Group Signify to Brook Hill Enterprises and viable entry agreement between the city and Gen Light Thomas Group.
I move that we would approve the ratification of consent to assign leases to Gen Light and Thomas Group.
Second.
And to Brook Hill Enterprises.
We have a motion, a second, a motion by Mr. Davis, the second by Mr. Travis Beard, again, council, voting.
The rights that Genlight has under a series of, under four leases are being assigned to Brook Hill Enterprises. We need consent to that assignment under the terms of the lease agreements. Also, there are some items that Genlight Thomas will need to clean up in the city-owned portion of that building over the next few months, so we are allowing them to enter that building and take care of those prominent issues.
Any comments? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number fourteen, in the matter of consideration of a pay increase for the mayor and the city council. So moved. We have a motion by Chad Mills to sacrifice Natty Davis. Mayor?
Well, I'll speak on behalf of the recommendation for the council. I've got the MML municipal salary making a little bit more than they are making, so my recommendation was to move that from forty thousand to twenty-three thousand, and also with that a pay raise for the president. So my recommendation is to the salary increase. Now, you may speak on the mayor's part. I'll speak on the council's part, okay? And I will let State speak on that as well, if you'd like.
Thank you, President Palmer. The administration approached yourself and several members of the council, and as the mayor was speaking, the city, similar to the size of Tupelo in the state of Mississippi, it, an increase in the mayor's salary would get the mayor's salary comparable to the size of the city of Tupelo. So we ask that the city council approve a pay increase for the mayor's salary to go into effect during the next term.
Thank you. I'm sure if there's somebody some comments, there's questions.
I would like to first emphasize that this is not going to affect until July first, 2025, so that these increases are not with this council per se. And if something were to happen to our economy or our budget, whatever, we have until ninety days before that to rescind this or make changes to it. So it's not that, you know, if something happens to our economy and we can't afford to do this, we feel like it's not good to give ourselves a raise, then we won't do it, or discuss.
Any other comments? Now, we want to emphasize this is for the next group, the next term, so we want to be sure. We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number fifteen, in the matter of municipal fourth clerk training. So we have a motion by, in my, a second by Mr. Rockley. Not that we will have anyone to speak to, other than the contractual department, thank you.
No, sir. It has to be voted on and entered in a matter of record.
But basically, it's a, it's a statutory approval for Mark Williams. Great, fine, great. So any comments at all? All in favor of this motion? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item sixteen, in the matter of review slash approval of appointment of Mark Williams to Tupelo Planning Committee. We have a motion by Travis Spear, a second by Janet Gassman.
Yes, currently, Ward Six has a vacancy on the Tupelo Planning Committee. Councilwoman Gassman highly recommended Mr. Mark Williams to be representative of Ward Six. The mayor agreed to Miss Gassman's recommendation and asked the council to confirm Mr. Williams as the representative of Ward Six on the Tupelo Planning Committee. And we do have Mr. Williams here with us tonight to introduce the council and everyone else in attendance. And Miss Gassman would like to make any comment. You're very welcome, Mr. Williams.
I would, thank you. I'm going to just tell you a little bit about Mark. Mark's a native of Tupelo. He attended Tupelo High School. He graduated from Mississippi State and with a degree in banking and finance. He is currently the Chief Operations Officer of Renaissance Bank. I worked for Mark for how many years? A hundred?
Two to five.
I assisted for about seven years while I was at Renaissance. He has extraordinary leadership skills. He's worked in many facets of the banking industry, so his background is very well-studied for the planning committee. He is one of the smartest people I know. He listens very well and hears what you have to say before he makes up his mind, and he applies common sense before he makes recommendations or decisions. I think he'll do a great job.
Any other comments? A motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being on the planning committee. Thank you.
Glad to be here.
Item number seventeen, in the matter of review slash approve slash reject planning committee recommendation for rezoning of property off of West Jackson Extended Application Number Twenty-One dash zero four. So moved. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Madsen, I have a second by Travis Spear. Mr. Madsen?
Yes, the planning committee submitted recommendation for the council, asking council to approve a rezoning request for the close site LLC to change part of a parcel there off of West Jackson Extended from medium-density residential to low-density residential, and another part of the same parcel from next-use commercial to low-density residential, attached to the general resolution of the official zoning map. And the administration and the council approved this recommendation by the planning.
Any comments, questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number eighteen, in the matter of review slash approve properties for facilities. Those properties are located on Fourth Thirty-Nine North Spring, along a way to Eugene Street and Cleveland Four Eleventh Avenue. So moved. I have a dual motion by Travis, a second by, in my, Tanner.
Yes, tonight, there's a slate for the council. We're asking you to approve demolition of Fourth Thirty-Nine North Street, go to the way, twenty-fourth, at the end of three, as all the way to the right, council. There's a process in place that the Department of Health Services will continue to offer these property owners for, hopefully, the best resolution for the property. But unfortunately, this stage of the process, we're definitely asking the council to approve the demolitions. One of the whole houses within this neighborhood, we spoke to him with those property owners yesterday, will continue to stick with the element of trying to get a reservation there. And the other two, we're trying to work, and we will continue to attempt to render those property owners the best resolution, but I would ask the council to approve those demolitions so that we can save the force and continue the process.
I have a motion, a second, any comments?
He's already indicating someone that contacted him, related to the Fourth Thirty-Nine and First, probably belonged to Donika Grayson, and her son has taken charge of property. He contacted the city of Tupelo, and we need to let us know that he's been in process of working to open their home so that if we can specify the case by the city of Tupelo grant is mine.
Very good. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Tanner. Item number nineteen, in the matter of approval of major fair fair committee minutes for October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. I have a motion by Mr. Janet Gassman, a second by Chad. I think about Chad, Matt, man. Chad, I'm, I'm, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item twenty, in the matter of surplus, K nine vehicle for Prince County Sheriff's Department. We have a motion by Travis Spear, a second by Mr. Rockley. Chief.
Yes, we're asking council to approve this. Of course, Prince County is on record tomorrow, and Sheriff told her, and that group has a new dog with their training, to the body expense, buying that train, involving this caliber. And we had a, we had a vehicle listed as, well, Sheriff let top of it, that we're not going to put any more money into, and we're going to put up a surplus, send it anyway for auction, and we asked it to approve. We will let the surplus of this vehicle, and then we can sell that to them for a dollar.
Any questions for Chief Knight? I have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Item number twenty-one, in the matter of approval of narcotics unit unmarked vehicle list. We have a motion by Travis Spear, a second by Mr. Natty Davis.
Yes, this is some ten different makes and models of city narcotics units that they have, using every day and or investigations, and require you look at that, that are all marked, and you put them together.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number twenty-two, in the matter of surplus and donation of a total of... So moved. Second. We have a motion by Travis, a second by Chad. Chief.
Yes, once again, this is the, this is an item, helping our neighbors out, this part of proof, you earlier to go to a city in Rooksville, as it turned out, the city was unable to shut that vehicle above ours. And our neighbors, the South, in the law, asked if we had anything that might be available next year, and we just asked that we surplus this and turn it here to that city for a dollar.
Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Chief. Item number twenty-three, in the matter of appointment of Darryl Markle to the Bancorp South to run the commission. I have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second by Janet Markle. Janet Gassman, you all in?
This is my, this is my...
If I had free, how many?
It says by point, but the recommendation from President Palmer's office.
Yes. Darryl, if you would stand, please.
Tell me I didn't have to do this.
Yes, this young man has got quite a, his resume, he's very well known below about Hunter Fenton. He's a sound man for Hall Park. He is a member of Sound Man Hall with the Orchard. We call him that. He is a very accomplished musician, musician himself, and I think he's a great, great asset for the College and Commission. We're asking him to come and speak. I always ask you to bring your bass, record bass, next time, and cut a few riffs or whatever you want.
As long as you bring your drum.
I'll pray by mountain, and we'll get down one time. So we appreciate you, Darryl. So I hope you get approved, and we're going, we're going to check it out. All in favor of this point? Thank you so much, Darryl. Appreciate you. Item number twenty-four, in the matter of approval of Bancorp South to run in minutes of October twenty-fifth. We have a motion by Mr. Janet Gassman, a second by Morgan Jones, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. In the matter of approval of traffic committee minutes from November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. So moved. Second. We have a motion by Travis Spear, a second by Lynn Brown, all in favor. That's unanimous. In the matter of request for approval of surplus here, so moved. Second. We have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second by... Can you? Janet, Janet Jones, please.
I have a request of board to surplus a nineteen eighty-six Ford bigger dairy truck. It's been a good unit for this time for us to move along with. And we have received a new replacement unit for it, so I'd like to get it out for the audience, which are huge units and takes up a lot of space. I'd like to take silver kids on and move it on now.
Any questions for Tony? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Item number twenty-seven, in the matter of approval of emergency replacement of a twenty-four-inch pressure sewer line. We have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second by Janet Jones, please.
This is a twenty-four-inch sewer pressure unit, comes from actually from Toyota. It was replaced about fifteen years ago. It's up to iron, it's carrying a thousand foot. We will be replacing this with PVC. We're actually in this thousand foot, we have it in bypass mode, bypass pumping it, so we need to get this back, get it back normal. And if, we're looking at sixty days, we could, we could handle that.
Any questions? How long would it take to, if we approve it, how long would it take to get that done?
Five days. We've already, we've already found the pipe, know where the pipe's located. As soon as I get your approval, I can get you to, and we can start. Or you have a contractor moved up to do it.
I certainly agree, and definitely, I'm going to say so. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And item number twenty-eight, in the matter of approval for submission of FY twenty twenty-one assistance to firefighters grant of... Is that it?
This is due...
Boy, give it your emotions, I'm not...
A motion.
Right. Not emotional, just asking, a second by Chad. Okay.
This is a home insecurity grant, but a FEMA grant, so a little different warranty up here for. This is due in two weeks. This is a quick term. This was unexpected, I believe it was just some funding they had left from the first FY twenty-one submission for earlier this year in February. So we decided to do it really quickly here, and I want to get it in tonight. We are going to, this is for our firefighters, our department, and they do provide plumbing for a lot of safety. It's the only thing we deem a safety risk issue for firefighters, which carcinogens, obviously, is a big risk for them. Their ensembles, with that, everything that we do to keep them safe is something that we should just always, they kind of sub and align with. And all of these things also expire, which is something to keep in mind. So everything needs to be replaced, everything needs to be cleaned thoroughly, and that's something that this grant assists communities with. And when we submit every year, the ones I've done so far, the one that I did earlier this year, the ones done prior to me, arriving last year, were all along the same line of equipment, washer, dryers, and tractors, the big ones that have been received twice. This year, with this one, I think we would like to pursue new ensembles for each firefighters. That would be about ninety-five units, and a price of three hundred thousand dollars is what we will put in for. This will allow them to use one ensemble, and for us to wash it, clean it, and then have another one ready to go, so they don't have to wear dirty peeps on the job if another call comes in prior to any. So it seems pretty simple, but, you know, the logistics are very extensive and all the rest. There is a two to fifteen percent match for this, which has been budgeted for, and part of it, they have that with their budget right now. So if you're comfortable, you submit this, and we're as promised.
Any questions, comments, prayers? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you, now, Mr. Jackson. We'll now close the record session and go into the study attendants, which we do not have any options for. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting for executive session.
I'm not, I'm not motioning to adjourn the session.
Second. And the second would be donation for real property to the city and the abandoned, they could use a light way, to join property, to develop small subdivision, but those items would be appropriate matters for executive session. Thank you, council. Now, entertain a motion for an executive session.
No, no, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Gassman, a second by Mr. Mills, all in favor? We're now in executive session. We appreciate all the... Now, I entertain a motion for into executive session.
No, please.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Gassman, the second by Mr. Mills, all in favor? We're now in executive session. We appreciate all of you, gentlemen.